Grateful to be allowed the opportunity to learn, work, and live on 3D11 land within the Gwichon settlement area, in the lands of the New Vic final agreement. And just so people know, tonight, in addition to the councilors present, we have councillor Alexis is on Zoom. So calling the meeting to order, we called to order, we've set a motion, no, no motions made, the agenda is presented. We have added one item, 8.5. Do we need declaration of conflict of interest or pecuniary interest? Are you seeing none? Delegations, presentations, and petitions. Staff Sergeant Austin, you're here for the RCMP's report.
Thank you very much. You know, hopefully everybody got a chance to read the mayor's report. I know I kind of skipped right to it, but I mentioned the last time I was at town council meeting about that CDSA search warrant we executed at Nova Apartments, sort of at the end of, or beginning of February. I'm happy to say we just executed another one last Thursday. I hope and have a bit more information on that in the next few days. But decent amount of proceeds of crime seized, small amount of controlled sentences, but still, you know, good proactive measures by, by the detachment. And sort of that got me thinking as well of other community partners about kind of what we all could do, you know, to sort of kind of combat that, because obviously the police can't do that alone. We'll continue to disrupt it as much as we can. You know, our job is to, you know, go after the individuals that profit from this, but sort of community at large, you know, I think we, we all need to come together and try to figure out how we can help people, help the community with the misuse of substances, not just drugs either, the alcohol obviously is included in that too. So, you know, I look forward to working with various community partners over the next year, basically, to try to find ways we can partner and help those folks that need it. So, you know, obviously lots of community engagement too, we're not just out there arresting people. We're, you know, we're in school still, we're doing the proactive traffic initiatives that I know that the council likes. And, you know, our priorities work off of fiscal year. So, you know, we're in the, in the early stages of planning sort of strategically what we want to do and how we want to try to help reduce crime in Inuvik. I know I've had some really discussions with the mayor and about what we can do, but definitely open suggestions. I think everybody's got like contact information and things that we can do, things that we're hearing in the community that people would like to see addressed. So I'm fairly receptive to people reaching out to me and definitely open up here tonight for questions, comments, or concerns if anybody has any.
Any comments for Staff Sergeant Austin? Councillor Devon?
Thank you, Staff Sergeant. You know, you're not going to give us the details of the latest, but was it a return as well?
So I can, I can confirm one of the persons charged is from Overton.
So the next interagency meeting is actually on this Wednesday, March 13th at 1:15 at the Aurora Research Institute. If people are interested in coming and speaking to the topic of how do we deal with the addictions in the community, drugs and alcohol. All right, anything else for Staff Sergeant Austin? Councillor Wayman?
Like our staffs are going way up on everything, like the drug trapping, shutting the lot down, really impressive. Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and, you know, we always say this, big thanks to the community. We can't do our job with the community members, community citizens, reporting crime and, and helping us out. So it's, you're welcome. And, but it's a big thanks to the community at large for, for helping us do our job. We couldn't do, we couldn't do what we do without the community. So, thank you very much, councillor.
Thank you. So can I clarify, I see people here from the Muscat Jamboree, are they presenting now? Hey, could I ask you to come up to the microphone, please? Turn the button on the side and turn on the microphone? So if you could please introduce yourself by name, and then we'll let you go into the presentation.
Good evening. My name is Bernice Furlong, and I have Jadakopia, who's one of our young mentors that we have at Muscat Jamboree. And I'd like to thank the councillors and councillors for inviting us, although we only had notice this afternoon. I'm here because our president and our other members are either traveling or homesick with influenza or their children are not doing well. We're here tonight because we requested the cell piece up at the complex, and we're hoping that we have a positive outcome of that. We heard that it was shut down for three weeks. So we're not sure if we're going to be able to hold our events at the complex at that time. We're going to get a response as soon as we can. I just want to say that the Muscat Jamboree is 66th year, and as always, we're looking forward to the event. The members, the committee are working hard to make sure that everything falls into place. Our Muscat Jamboree is a big event of the year. We always bringing people from all over, over delta communities along with them, people from down south. And we try to work with the airlines where they can give them a discount so that they come and have an example and a good show from the community of Inuvik. It also brings in money for the other businesses in the community. So I, if you want to have any questions, I can take them and bring them back to the members. And, but we always thank you for your support, and we look forward to working with all the community.
Thank you. And the dates are April 4th to the 8th, is that correct? April 5th to the 8th, April 5th? Okay. And I'm just going to ask if the director, Craig, is in the back, if he could confirm if the complex is open at that time?
Currently, we're having Simco in the facility to diagnose our iplant on the arena side and the curling club side. And so at the end, end of this week, that work should be completed, and we should have a better idea whether our facility will undergo the repair at that time, or if we will defer to a later date to accommodate the Muscat Jamboree.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No questions for the delegates? Councillor Wayman?
So, is the floor safe to go on?
So Director Craig, could you come up to the microphones so we can actually hear what you're saying? Or just pick one of the other microphones?
I don't have a yes or no answer to your question, councillor.
But next, next week when they, this week for investigator, next?
They're currently at the facility right now doing their diagnosis and, and giving us an idea of where our glycol leak was coming from. Normally, in the past, we bring in the very large stage line trailer and other assets, and with the increased weight and other assets that are on the floor and the increased number of people that are on the floor, we don't, we don't know.
Okay. Just curious, because it's a big, Muscat Jamboree is the biggest event we have all year. So we'd like to get more answers sooner than later if we could. Thank you.
I wish I had an answer.
Oh, I mean, when you get the answer, and if we can't, we've got to find a way to accommodate the other parts of the building somehow or something.
So Director Craig, would I be right in thinking that the community hall floor is okay? We're just worried about the glycol piping under the arena surface?
That's correct.
And the curling rink side is okay?
They're completing their diagnosis on both sides, the curling rink and the arena, to isolate where the problem is.
All right, thank you. Are there any other questions, Councillor Devon?
Would it be possible to, in good picture, move the, the main part to the curling?
I would suspect that would be satisfactory to do until we get the word that the floor on the curling club is safe to use, or if we're identified that the arena is the problem, then my assurance would be that the curling club would be more than satisfactory to accommodate the venue.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the delegates or for Director Craig? Yes.
So, my question is how many, how many?
The microphone's not on.
So how many people can the curling club accommodate?
Does anybody know how many people the curling club can accommodate? Okay, so we're going to have to look that up, okay? But it sounds like the community hall's okay and potentially the curling club. And there's also upstairs. So we will look at your request on Wednesday. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have public questions here. Are there any questions in the public? Seeing none, we'll move on. On Wednesday, they made a motion to adopt the minutes from February 26th to 28th, council meetings. Item seven is your action items list. Your new business, so that was a Muscat request for a donation that we just turned now, or if you're doing that out of order. And next, we have RFC, RFCD 2024 SAO 025, conditional use permit for a solar power farm. There is a document in your package, if people want to look that over, and it is posted online for the public, yes?
Yes, it was posted online and here it shows.
Okay. So we do have somebody available to answer any questions?
Madam Chair, would you like me to deliver a prepared presentation?
I would, that would be very helpful. Thank you.
I'll share my screen. I'm not going to be using a PowerPoint. I'm just going to use the PDF version of the document that you are in possession of. Are you seeing requests for council decision on your screen?
We are.
Great. This presentation is for a council decision for development permit 24-06, conditional use permit for solar power farm and battery storage facility. It is being done under the zoning bylaw, the 2015 version. Under the zoning bylaw, there are a number of types of zones, and two of those types of zones is CU and P, respectively, conditional use and parks. Under all zones in the zoning bylaw, there are permitted and conditional uses. If a land use is listed under permitted use, myself as the designated development officer have been given permission from council to issue development permits on the behalf of the town. If a land use is listed under, under a conditional use, it means I do not have such permission, and I need to bring the development permit to council for approval. In both of these zones, P and CU, a public utility has been, a development permit for a development application for a public utility has been made, which is defined in the zoning bylaw as a system for electrical gener, electrical energy generation, transmission, and distribution. I will note that I have assumed that this includes storage. The term power storage was not commonly in use in 2015. The permit, the development application is for a solar farm on a piece of unsurveyed commissioner's land with a power grid going under, a power line going underneath the street and connecting to a new large-scale battery on a town-owned lot zoned condition, um, community use. The quonset on this property, which is next to the arena, would be removed, and the batteries would be set up there. And the unsurveyed, the unsurveyed commissioner's land would hold the solar farm facilities. The financial implications, both lots are owned by the town in Inuvik. That is incorrect. I apologize, the unsurveyed land is owned by the commissioner. The entire operation would be built, paid for, and owned and managed by the town of Inuvik through a contractor. The intent of the project is to provide a backup power supply for the town of Inuvik while hopefully reducing overall energy costs. My suspicion is, is that having lived in the north, having a battery the size of a 20-foot C can would be helpful to have in the wintertime in case one or both of the current power sources is, faces a intermission in use due to some reason or another. It's always good to have a backup. This item is not on the strategic priorities plan or chart. Other considerations, the solar power collection facility will cover, give or take 11,075 square meters of land, stretching roughly 175 meters along the north side of Gwichon Road from Natala Drive to Almost Bomb Pass Street. It will be about 60 meters deep, and the solar arrays will be supported by 134 piles. The ra, the arrays will be between 1.8 and 1.9 meters high. A 450-meter-long fence will surround the entire facility. There are no known safety issues with placing solar arrays near residential development, and the height of the arrays is unlikely to interfere with the view of the residences along Gwichin. The area is designated for future growth area in the proposed 2024 official community plan. As such, the development officer's judgment is that this portion of the proposal is consistent with current and proposed town of Inuvik planning documents. The power storage facility will be a pair of buildings.
Well, he's muted himself.
Peter, you muted.
How do we tell if he's muted?
I think he knows.
There we go. Sorry about that. It appears I froze for a moment. Where did I get cut off?
Where was that?
I'll continue. The power storage buildings are effectively 20-foot C containers filled with batteries. They will be visually innocuous and will meet current fire safety standards. Having a large power storage, I already talked about this. It is the development officer's judgment that this portion of the proposal is consistent with current and proposed town of Inuvik planning documents, and with the intents of the energy transition policy of the GNWT. The two portions of the development permit will need to be connected by power lines, which will cross Bomb Pass Street and Gwichin Road. These road allowances are owned by the town of Inuvik, and arrangements for their installation will be made between the builder and the town, and the town, following approval of this conditional use permit. The options on this application are, council may accept the proposal and issue development permit. Council may reject it and send the project packing. Or council may refer the document back to administration with suggested changes or areas that require further investigation. Recommendation from the development officer is approval with the resolution written here. I'll just go through the application form and related documents quickly, which should answer any remaining questions. That's the lot block plan number of the, of the lot with the quonset on it. The applicant included the information, which I have included in my report, through their application. It's not accessory use, was not, does not have a deck. It did have a proposed fence. The height of the fence is 1.8288 meters. I rounded that to 1.8 meters, because that seemed very, an accurate, very accurate number. And the length, the fence would be built in June. The quonset hut would be removed in advance of this development. It would be removed, to my understanding, to the landfill. It's not a home occupation. Here is a map of the site. This is Gwichin Road, this gray band running on the screen. These are multiplexes along the south side, and the solar farm would be bound by these five black boxes, each of which show the UTM coordinates in some detail. And this is a engineering schematic showing the complete project of the arrays and the power line, which goes underneath the road, and the battery power packs and plug into the existing power grid. And here's another map showing the PV array site. The conditions which are listed, sorry, this is a little bit messy. We are, we will have a cleaner Form C with the new zoning bylaw, which will remove these, these lines, which make it a bit difficult to read. There are four conditions which the builder needs to meet before, before this can occur. There will be agreement with the town of Inuvik on location, method of installation of power line from solar farm to batteries. So that's basically saying, how are we going to get the power line underneath Gwichin Road? How long will the road be shut down, or will it just be drilled underneath? Just working out those details with the public works department before work proceeds. And only, all I would need as DO is agreement from the public works saying, yes, we have an agreement. I don't even need to know the details. A site plan and details on battery storage facility. The developer had mentioned that those plans were still slightly flexible. They're working out a few details. The development permit will only be issued when the builder has finalized their plan and sent a signed version to myself as development officer and saying, this is what will be built. It will not be varied. Demolition agreement with the town and removal of the quonset. So that would be again, either an email string with public works or a signed agreement of some kind, saying exactly how the quonset would be removed, where it would be removed to, and how it would be disposed of, and who's going to do it, who's going to pay for it. And requirement, request for a drainage plan for the solar farm and renderings of the solar farm and the fence. So asking for more detail, I know where the solar, we know where the solar panels are going, but exactly how is it going, how exactly is the drainage plan going to work? And how are the renderings of the, how exactly, or what exactly are these things going to look like? Instead of just the, the top-down view that we have. And that concludes my presentation. I am now open for questions. Thank you.
Any questions? Councillor Harder?
Thank you for your presentation.
I'm having difficulty hearing.
Thank you for your presentation. I, I would like to actually, I'm in support of this project. I just would like to hear back about the engineer's report on the MSC building before we truly look at putting 124 pilings and making this a current location. I know that this is something that we've all been concerned about, to, to put an actual solar farm in this location if we may not have this location in the next five to 10 years to use. What would we be doing? What are the alternatives of this location for this solar farm if this facility is no longer usable? So that's, it's just, it's something that we've discussed before, and I think it's something that we need to continue to discuss. Thank you.
So Councillor Harder, does that tie into some of the concerns we've had that water may be seeping under that very hill?
Out of the hill and also, also just hearing about, we, we haven't got an engineer's report on the MSC facility yet, about the condition of the facility. And I think that we need to, we all kind of feel like we're putting the cart before the horse on this one. I know that this is a grant, and everything's been approved, and I'm totally in support of the project. But I really think that we need to defer this potentially, and just until we hear back about an engineer's report on the condition of the building.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I just want to clarify something. When you say town of Inuvik, do you mean the municipal government, or do you mean the community as a whole for power? Are we looking at power backup for the rec center, or is it something bigger? He froze again. Peter? Can you answer that? Can you hear us, Peter?
Pretty still.
Excellent.
Yes.
We lost him.
Yeah, he might, he might, oh, we'll just reconnect it all.
I, I have returned. It appears that I was disconnected briefly.
Thank you. Did you hear Councillor Harder's question?
The last question I heard was that we should wait for a engineering report.
Okay, for the rec center. And then my question was, are we talking about backup power for the municipality, or the entire community needs a town of Inuvik?
The power would be plugged into the town of Inuvik grid, so the power would be used for the, would be supplement, the power for the whole town.
And has the power corporation agreed to that?
I don't know. I would presume so, because the discussion's been ongoing for some time.
I think that's something we would absolutely need to have confirmed.
Well, that's if we're selling it back into the grid, we're collecting battery backup units, C cans, that's different, that's us, our own battery retention.
I think we need to check the power corporation, because in my day job, there's been times where we've added to, want to put power back in, and the answer's been no. So I think that's important to clear up, so we don't have any surprises later. But I do have another question. So the area being proposed, is that not very close to the ski hill? Wasn't that land that was supposed to be for parks?
The location that is proposed is identified in the 2024 community plan for future urban development.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments? Councillor Harder?
I think it was explained to us that this, that this solar farm was just a backup for the MSC and not the whole town. So I just wanted clarification on that.
That was my understanding as well. So Peter, could we ask you to clarify that, please? Who are we backing up? Is the town a facility, or is this to go into the grid for the entire community?
I would have to look into that and get back to you unless there's another staff member who is able, able to answer that question.
Thank you. Any other question? Yes, we have a question from one of the staff. Come up to the microphone, please. And just for the record, will you introduce yourself with your name and your position?
Daniel's my name, Director of Infrastructure. Just, I just wanted to clarify the comments for my Uh, just, I just wanted to clarify the comments from, um, Councillor Harder about the, about deferring the project, so I mean, this one is funded by the feds, I think it's five point five, and they're giving us the whole of the money, uh, so we have an end date uh, to which we can actually spend the money. Um, in terms of the engineering reports for the MSC, we have that. They showed us their draft, uh, scope of work last week, so we're definitely working towards getting that done. But we, the current plan we have in place, or the conversation we're having with them is even if we're gonna be if potentially we have to build a new midnight sun complex, a new recreation center, we're still, we're looking at the possibility of doing it on the same lot. So one of the, one of the scope, in this agreed scope of work, is to have a geotechnical survey done for that particular lot and give us an idea of how we could still accommodate a new building on that lot, maybe the parking area or something like that, so that we don't have to completely move from that spot to somewhere else. So if the solar panel, uh, project goes ahead, that's not gonna be, I guess, what I'm just trying to say is that's not gonna be an issue, because the current plan is to accommodate a new building, if we're gonna go down, down that route, is to accommodate a new building on that lot. And, huh, and do this in some sort of, uh, a phasing approach, such that we don't have to shut down the MSC, because we're building a new one. Kind of, so that's the current approach and the current plan we have in place, but it's still in, it's still very much in early days. Uh, and once that's finalized, I guess, we'll bring that to council.
Councillor Harder?
Do you guys feel that there would be enough space in the current location, like the space available, to actually put a facility the same size? Because the parking lot's pretty small.
Yeah. That probably, that's part of the information we're gonna get from this report, and like I said, we'll probably have to use some of the existing lots, uh, the existing, where the existing structure is, and that's why I said we're planning some sort of phasing approach, so for instance, if we're gonna have it at the car park, and probably demo just the swimming pool first, but that is, we have to have a swimming pool first in place. So it's probably still, we're, we're probably still gonna use the same, not all of the same footprint, but some other.
Can I just caution that, that that is a, that's way down the road for where we're at, right now, we're just trying to find out what's happening. So there is, just so the community understands, there is no plan to be demolishing, et cetera.
No, no.
It's still in use, because the way this conversation's going, it sounds like we should all take our sledgehammers down there. So there is no plan, just to make that clear, but you're saying, should we ever get to that plan, or we ever add on to it, that this location for the battery backup would serve that whole site, am I correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or concerns?
One for myself, uh, I there's a question about the Anuvik Ski Club. Uh, while the discussion was occurring, I looked at the satellite, the Anuvik Ski Club building, as I'm sure most people are aware, is across the street from the Anuvik Youth Center. And the ski tracks that I can see on satellite, none of them intersect with the proposed solar farm array site.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Peter. Okay, we'll let you go, thank you. That'll be near me. General, if you'd please text him, tell him I love you. So moving on, we'll be voting on Wednesday on eight, eight, three. This is, uh, recommendation two thousand twenty-four SAO zero-two-six. The, uh, Union and Organ Workers Request for a Discount at the Fitness Center. And on eight point four, we'll be looking at the, um, recommendation two thousand twenty-four SAO zero dash two eight, real, reallocation of capital funds for the water treatment plant. Councillor Dowdlin?
Can we just speak to eight point three?
Yes, we can.
So I'm, I'm just curious, we're, we're a municipality that looks after the interests of all residents. But the UNW has made a request for discount, but they don't really give a reason why. I don't, it's just, hey, can you give us a discount, because we've got a thousand people? But they're asking, can the taxpayers give these thousand people discounts because of where they work? So I'm just, if there is a bit more of a justification about why they're asking for this, for the taxpayer to subsidize this, um, but they just don't, they're just asking for a request for a discount, so I'd like a little bit more clarity on that, I'm not comfortable, as everyone knows, with special interest groups and, um, benefits decisions. So I just like some clarity on that, please, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on that? Yes, Councillor Dowdlin?
Um, one of the things that they've done in Yonah, because this has come up, that some of the clubs there was, there's a minimum number of people who have to enroll, so basically in order to get the discount, you have to have a certain amount of people who have signed up for a membership under that type of, uh, status. Um, but yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to know kind of how to help with the numbers and how many people are interested and thank you from the director about the impacts, financial impacts on that for for the services or for, for us as a town.
Uh, Director Craig, you want to say something?
Oh, I wasn't, I wasn't sure if I was supposed to answer that question, uh, immediately, or if that was the return to Wednesday night, uh, at the meeting, or if that
You can answer now, but I need you to come to the microphone, please.
That could be for Wednesday's discussion, like just if you, you know, harp on the reason why they asked or requested it. You know, if you have a certain number, number of participants in mind, how that would affect this, you know, when some numbers bias on, on on, uh, two hundred or three hundred or four hundred people that sign up and it's a membership. Just numbers, for example.
So Director Craig, are you able to follow up with the UNW before Wednesday's meeting, to ask them the reason for what they're asking for, and if they're looking at a certain number of members? Oh, yes, I will, thank you so much. Any other questions on this topic? And if not, we'll move on to eight point four. Any questions on that? Okay, we're going to move on to eight point five, this is in addition to the agenda, and I will ask Councillor Dowdlin to, uh, address the council.
So this is gonna be my, my last week on council. Um, accepting transfer assignments, my full-time job to, uh, Yonah Nursery Regional Office for ECNE. Um, I did talk to MACA about trying to connect remotely and access the town council meetings remotely, if that was possible, and I was told unfortunately no. Since I won't be residing in Anuvik anymore, then I have to resign. I'll say my fair words on Wednesday.
Thank you, I know for you as a person, it's a great move, but for us, it's a real loss. Councillor Dowdlin?
Uh, we did have a council that lived outside of, uh, two terms of, two, three terms of now, he's, he's in Edmonton for a year, medical. You called in the meetings?
I think the difference might have been was the person was on medical versus moving away from work.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councillor Dowdlin?
Thank you, Grant, for your time, and it's been quite interesting serving with you, um, and, uh, and obviously, I, I wish you the best, and you as well, but it is good news for your career, you, you will be a loss here at, uh, the town council. You've been a very stable, so thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Dowdlin. Next, we have nine point one, disposable by the way of sale bylaw two seven three one. We'll be looking for the third and final reading on Wednesday night, and this is for the sale of land on Lagoon Road. Any questions or comments around that? Okay, and moving on, do we have any department head reports? Again? We have no department head reports? In two weeks, thank you. For information items, we have a strategic priorities chart, are there any questions on that? Been a long time since we've updated this. Any questions or comments? Okay, and moving on, we have council concerns, are there any council concerns tonight? Do we have anything in camera? Nothing in camera? Then we, uh, will, we're direct. Welcome to a direct, I'm not sure if we need one, but sure, you can make one.
No.
Okay, Peter, Councillor Harder and